Good evening, welcome to tonight's September 5th New Market School Board. Would Ashley like to lead us in the ...
...............................................................
Okay, so we have some recognitions tonight.
Yes, we do.
Are you ready for that?
I am. Tonight, we're recognizing five people, four of whom, let me see, one, two, three, four, yeah, four of whom are here. And, um, and, and the recognitions, um, I think when they found out about them, they said, "I was just doing my job." Almost unanimously, they're just doing their job. But what they did throughout the summer to get us to one of the best openings I've ever seen, and with all that was going on in the schools, uh, yeah, they just did their jobs, but they just did an outstanding job. And so it's, uh, it's worthy of recognition, and so we've, we've invited them here tonight. The first one who, uh, he was not here, but I would really, I really wish he were here, Bob French, the head custodian. If you had any sense of what happened at the junior, senior high school, both before the school year ended in getting ready, and then while we went through the summer, and then getting ready for the opening of school, just heroic kinds of activities that he did and the commitment that he did. He really takes care of that place like it's his own house, and, uh, and so it's very proud of him. But he's not here, but I will catch up with him soon. The next two individuals, again, all that I said applies, but I'm gonna ask different people to come up and, and say a few words to, to really kind of frame the, the reason that's over and above them. So I asked Pat Ballantyne to talk tonight about two administrators, so.
Good evening. If you look at the Random House Dictionary, it talks about commitment and dedication as synonyms. And I would have to say, the two people that we're recognizing tonight, Principal Christopher Andruski and Assistant Principal Christopher Mazzoni, not only showed commitment and dedication, but they wholeheartedly got into whatever they needed to do to open that building for our students and staff this summer. Always with a smile, moving things, lifting things, helping teachers, helping their own staff in the office, but got a little crowded. Um, but always with our students in mind, and a positive attitude to send that message to all that we are truly about kids in this district. So both Christoffers need to come up, and we will give you a small gift.
Chris squared.
Chris squared. We have a moratorium on Chris, I reckon.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I didn't say anything.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
We have those two. Okay. Good. Congratulations. And next, Jean Parsons, Director of Student Services. I've asked her to say a few words.
I wanna, what'd you say?
A few words.
A few words. It's gonna be quick.
Two pages or less.
Two pages or, it's, it's less than two pages. Um, he's already got a red face. I'm here to honor Chris O'Callahan. He stepped up to the plate this year with a new position that we created. We reduced having two special ed coordinators down to one, so he's now the coordinator for both buildings. He really stepped up to the plates. He's got newer and bigger responsibilities. He began by arranging individual meetings with all of the staff at the elementary school to get them, get to know them all personally, to make sure they knew what he was all about, and that he was there for them. This summer, he was in charge of the elementary school program during the month, the elementary summer school program during the month of July. He played a primary role in the organization of the extended year services, not only for the elementary school, but also for the middle and high school. And because of construction, it all had to be in the same building, we had to keep them separate, so the big kids didn't feel like they were going to school with the little guys. We were, we wanted to have everybody feel like they had their own program. Chris managed all that, took care of it for the summer. He did a great job. He's already started this year working to streamline IEP meetings, so that the elementary meetings will mirror the junior high meeting styles, so as to streamline, perhaps limit the number of meetings that we have to do. He's had the assistance of Christina Cochran, who is our special ed team leader, and the two of them have been working seamlessly together. Chris has been fantastic. And personally, I have to say, I love working with Chris. I have a great rapport with him. He's a pleasure to work with. He has excellent insights, dependability, a great sense of humor, which you need in special ed, big time. And all of that goes a long way to making my job easier. I have complete trust in Chris, and I'm delighted that he's being recognized tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And the last comments will come from Business Administrator Christine Blue.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to honor, as well as to give a presentation after this, but more importantly, the best part of my night is to recognize Teresa Marvin, who is our payroll specialist accounts payable, and so on and so on. She has a job description, and I always classify it as other duties as assigned, so she wears many hats in my office. A few words to describe her. I would say that she is a team player. She's dedicated, extremely dedicated, that's an undertaking, hardworking, she's persistent but with humor. She always has a smile. If she doesn't have a smile, and she always wears two, 'cause she'll wear mine sometimes in the morning. She's often here very late at night, so I would say she definitely goes above and beyond the call of duty. She's very detail-oriented, and she's very, very supportive of our staff. She's always willing to take the call, even though if that makes her day longer, and she takes work home. So we definitely appreciate that. As you may know, we've had two large tasks this year. We've had a payroll, well, I shouldn't say just payroll, but we had a software, financial software system conversion, which for her means payroll and accounts payable, so she took on a tremendous undertaking by changing the programs over in the middle of the year. That started in January 1st. But I think we ran into some, some bumps come July 1st, because not only did we have to learn the new software, but we had to get everybody in for payroll. So that was a lot of dedication, a lot of hours spent in that, as well as a healthcare change. So we had to provide a lot of support, educating, and updating of all of our files and everything. So it is without hesitation that I want to thank you. You are the most wonderful person I've ever worked with, and your two great daughters are here to see it, so I'm glad that they could come tonight. So thank you for everything you do.
That does conclude the recognitions for this evening. We'll take about a five-minute break, so board members can greet the honorees personally. Five-minute breaks. Yeah.
Did you use your last, though? I bet.
That superintendent stare.
What does it look like?
No, it doesn't look.
Oh, okay.
Is it in a stare?
Did she? Yeah.
She didn't even hear me, though.
I don't believe that. I can't believe that, really.
It wasn't like...
If she's not pleased with something?
Well, it was more like, I don't really know where your heading says.
Uh-huh. Yeah, yeah.
And it's gone.
All right. Welcome back, everybody. This is the part in our agenda where we usually welcome the visitors to come up and say a few words. Is there anyone that would like to say something?
Hi, Tony Weinstein, 275 Ash Swamp Road. I'm here tonight to voice some concerns about the budget process. I realize that it's that time of the year, and my hope is that the school board can find a way to engage the community earlier in the process than it did last year. I think it's safe to say that many parents felt blindsided by the cuts that were made during the last budget cycle. Suddenly and without much warning, we were faced with five and a half positions being cut, and a public hearing that felt like a mere formality. I know that when we talk about cutting the budget, we're really talking about cutting positions. And clearly, those are sensitive issues. They're real people, who we know, and it's an emotional process, and it makes sense that the administration and school board don't want to needlessly worry anyone due to their deliberations. But I feel that we need to accept this as the not-so-new reality, and have open conversations about the implications of staffing changes in our district. With this in mind, I urge the school board to find ways to involve the community in the budgetary process earlier and more thoroughly. And I realized tonight that it was on the agenda, so hopefully that will be a part of it. Also, last year, many parents, including myself, accepted that the school board was acting in the best interests of the community, and supported the suggested cuts, even though there were many doubts about how these would affect the students. We were assured by administrators that there would be no change to the quality of education in New Market Schools. In fact, it would probably even improve. I understand that we're only a few days into the school year, but I'd like to request that the school board offer an update of the cuts that were made last year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
I do. I get very nervous.
Oh, don't be. It's fine.
So, um, my questions are about the Common Core curriculum that is being implemented.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, hi, I'm Laura Lavoy, Packers Falls Road. So it's about the Common Core curriculum and all of the assessments, the new assessments that are gonna be implemented. And my concerns for our children are with privacy issues, and, and I have been, I've visited Dr. Hayes, and I've been up to the school a couple times, and, so I guess I just, I would like to know, you know, formally, I did hand in an opt-out form for my son. It's very important to me that his information is kept in the district. I don't want his information being shared through different branches of, you know, state and federal government. And, and this is a big concern. There's a big movement going on right now throughout the state and the country regarding this issue. So I have emailed a couple of you a list of questions that I have, and I don't, I don't wanna sit here and read them all, but there are issues as well with, you know, the cost to the community. I know that we're, we're strapped financially as a community, and, you know, what is the cost analysis with all of that regarding the implementation? Are we set up technologically for that? And, you know, spending new money on new curriculum, when I would like to know, you know, with our old curriculum, what was, is this, is this better? They call it internationally benchmarked, but I think there's very little data showing that it's better than what we have had. So I just haven't heard any discussion really around town regarding this issue, and it's very important to me, and I would like to just bring it to the attention of the community, so that maybe we can get some discussion going. So I've been to a couple meetings at the, you know, at the state, at the state level as well, just trying to really educate myself on this matter. And, so I guess I just wanted to get some communication going with other people around town, and, and get their ideas and their thoughts.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else? Looks like everyone else here is part of our crew. All right, so this is where we move on to the minutes. Anyone have any motions they would like to make?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the August 7th, 2013 Board Retreat Meeting.
Thank you.
Second set.
Okay, is there any discussion? No? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Post?
How about appropriately an abstention? Because I wasn't...
Yes.
Yeah, that would probably be right. Thank you. Okay, so that passes, what, four with one abstention? All right, to the next set. Anyone?
Can you make me do it again?
You'll do it.
That's awesome.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the August 8th School Board Retreat Minutes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on those? Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
And one abstention.
And one abstention.
Thank you.
Okay. Not post, so that's four to one. All right, here's your chance. The next set.
Oh, are you queuing?
I'll move acceptance of the minutes of August 15th, 2013, for discussion, but I saw one thing that needs to be amended.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, so the discussion would be?
Looking.
While you're looking, I would like to just remind the community about the, um, the two gracious gifts we got. One from the anonymous donor of $4,000 towards technology. Thank you, whoever you are. That was great. And the $4,000, the gift from the PTA as well, was very, very thoughtful.
It was on page four, the overnight field trip request. The soccer team was going out. Coach McNeil? Coach?
It's Coach Moral.
Moral.
They have it as Chris Mazzoni.
Yay!
You're the new soccer coach!
Yay!
I wrote something in, and I...
First name that came to mind.
It's another Chris.
Are there any other? That's a friendly, I think that's good. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Post, none? Okay, so that...
I didn't think to look that one up.
It'd be Osceola.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to committee reports. Ashley, what's been going on at the school?
So today was picture day.
Already?
Yeah. And then the sports teams are getting started. Football has their first game this Saturday against Farmington at the Epping Fields at 1:30. The girls' soccer team is 2-0, and the boys' soccer team is 0-1 after going double overtime against Epping last night.
That was a heartbreaker.
Yeah. And the golf team is 0-3. And the cross-country has their first meet Tuesday at Campbell High School. And I think everyone at school is starting to get into the groove and getting used to the new school. I think everyone was really surprised and excited about the new school. That was kind of nice to see.
So not the new school, but the renovations in the school?
It seems like the new school. You'll get a lot.
Very nice, yeah.
That's great.
Well, that's good. I'm glad. Anybody have any questions?
I'm just kind of curious from the student's perspective of where stairways have been moved or removed, and the way you get places doesn't exist anymore. Were folks kind of like, "Oh, wait a minute, I can't go that way in the halls for a while?"
See, I don't, like, I find myself going to where the hallway is and just like, "Oh, okay." But I think that it's a lot more ideal now, because you don't have this awkward hallway anymore going to nowhere. But I think that the nice ramp for, to where like the chem room is now, that's really nice to have. So I think everyone finds it very convenient. They like it a lot.
Great. All right.
I'd like to give a little shout-out to the New Market Soccer Game against Fremont. New Market won, so congratulations, New Market.
Yay!
May there be plenty of pizza.
All right, Jim, you have your superintendent's report.
I do. I really don't wanna comment about, just really, two comments about the same thing, and that is the opening of school. First of all, I had, in the materials I sent you, I said that I'd be showing the opening of schools video that we put together, the two principals along with Chris Williams, but when I saw it and saw how long it was, and it was long because, you know, Chris rightly gave a, a tour of the changes in his building, and so it is available to people. You can see it at Channel 13, see it online if you would, but I didn't wanna take that length of time to, to show it here tonight. So I'm not gonna show that. But I am gonna comment. I mean, obviously, I've visited both schools' opening days and, and talked with staff, and, and just an outstanding opening. I mean, the words that people were saying was just real enthusiasm, great kids, great beginning, and, you know, credit to, to the administrators who are here, but also just everybody who pulled together to make just as, just as smooth as possible an opening, like we never left.
Especially with all the things that happened over the summer, and all the changes.
Yes, I know. All it was going on.
And what the building, I'm told, looked like, like 12 hours...
Only a few hours before. You're right. You're right. So, so, great opening. I wanted to say that.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, to all those that participated. All right, now we have your facilities report.
Yeah, several things to comment on here. First of all, we do have a meeting scheduled for the 11th, which is next Wednesday, with the folks from Oyster River, meeting at our junior, senior high school at 6 o'clock. And, and hopefully those will be productive meetings, I'm hoping, because, I mean, clearly I think they've gotten the message that, as it stands, it's quite an expensive proposition. So hopefully, things will change with that. Secondly, I wanna talk about public, public hearings that came out of the presentations that were done in August. Monday, September 16th, 9:30 in the morning, in this room. And then the following day, Tuesday, the 17th, downstairs in the auditorium at 7 o'clock in the evening. And then another one a week later, Tuesday, the 24th, at 7 o'clock in the evening and downstairs. So it's a chance for people to come and ask questions and learn more, and hopefully I'll know more coming out of our meeting on the 11th that I can share with people. So it's as up-to-date as possible, and the more people learn about these options, the better, so. Number three, and I know Chris will talk about it, but the Science Egress Construction Project is virtually done. The only thing remaining is the fume hood and the chemistry lab. And I can't say enough about the Meridian Construction, the general, the construction managers, just an outstanding job of really thoughtful, dedicated work. They were, they were determined that we were gonna open on time, and it wasn't just about putting things back together, but it was about making changes in a way that really enhanced ourselves educationally. So it was, it was just a great partnership, and so I'm really, really pleased, and I'm sure when you, well, you folks took a tour this evening, so you got to see, but if you watch the video, you'll get a chance to see the changes, and I know Chris Andruski in his principal report will talk a bit about it, too. But great job, nice to have it done on time. Still don't have an accounting on what the full cost is, but obviously, we'll let you know when we do. The fourth is, is to make public that, that on September 30th, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium here, there will be a joint meeting of school board, town council, and budget committee. And, and it really is, is primarily just to listen to and then discuss what they learn about an alternative fuel possibility that has come along, that, that I've, I've brought forward to people to, to consider. About, about, well, about a year and a half ago is when, is when the facilities committee and then the school board approved the schematic design, and we had cost estimates for building a new junior, senior high school across the street from the current school. And, and shortly after that, then I met with the, our architect, and I said, "Okay, now that that's out of the way, I'm ready to start talking about exploring alternative energy solutions that can help us in our school, that can help us reduce operating costs, in a real smart way." And so he, the architect Dan Bisson connected me with the president of Harriman Architects and Engineers, Clifton Grime, and his base of operations is, I think, Bangor, Maine. Anyway, we, we had a meeting at which he went through a number, I'm gonna say somewhere around eight to 12, I can't remember exactly, but a variety of different alternative energy options that could conceivably be used in this project. And so I met with him and with Dan, and we talked about how this, could the site accommodate this and so forth? And we all settled in on one that appeared to be far and away the best option, which is the use of compressed natural gas. And, and, and the concept that I later learned from that, and that I think was, to me, the best-selling point, is that it would not just be an energy solution for a new school, but it can be like a local area natural gas network that serves a number of sites within, within proximity of wherever the storage is. And, um, so when we initially talked about a new school across the street, we said, "Well, we could site it on the current site, and then we could connect to the elementary school and the, not only the, the new junior high school, but the elementary school, the town hall, Lamprey Health, another big consumer with the pines." And, and so that was the initial concept that we had, and, and so then he was gonna go back and rework the numbers. But the, the kind of savings that he was presenting at the time was that this could reduce our, reduce our energy costs by at least 40%, which was significant. And then if it's a network, it's not just one school, it's schools, town hall, it's a variety of users. And that in creating this network, the infrastructure has, obviously, an investment, but the payback is only about two or three years. So it really was just a beneficial kind of project. So he went back to... So, he went back to rework the numbers and rework designs based on some things that we had. And, and the, the thing fell off the radar for a period of time and then came back. And, um, last, last June, I had a meeting where I invited him in again, and I invited, um, Steve Fornia from the town and Rick Malaski, um, uh, some other folks, I think, from, from the town, as well as, as well as, I know Chris Andruski was there, and, and Lamprey Health was there, but the pines couldn't make it. But I was trying to bring in all of the people who were potential players. And, um, and the concept just grew, uh, because we were, when we were looking at, uh, 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 you know, 500 feet looking down at, at the, at the landscape and where all of these places were located in, in New Market, it became clear that with a wastewater treatment facility, there's a great opportunity to have that storage facility be out there, connect it to the wastewater treatment, which I, I understand now is a, is a real high, a high consumer of, of fuel. And, and that then we could still connect it all the way out to the schools in the pines and involve the rec department and involve police department and, and other big users. So, so that, everybody was really excited about that possibility and asked him to go back and rework his slides and rework his numbers for a presentation about that kind of concept. And, um, and he's coming back on the 30th. And the, and so I felt, we're trying to grow this out to, to see if there's a real interest within New Market to, to follow this, uh, this opportunity. So, it, it obviously has moved from just being a ta, a school concept to a town-wide kind of concept, and so I've invited the, the budget committee and the town council and obviously you folks to be there and hear the presentation and ask questions and, and, and we see if that's something we want to continue to pursue. But it looked like a great, uh, great possibility for us, so. That's on the 30th.
Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome.
Anyone have any questions?
Okay.
I'll save those for the 30th, on that last.
Yeah, you need to learn more about it. I mean, it's, you know, but, uh, but he does a great job. He, he, he put me in touch with the president because this is his, his passion. He's president of the organization, but his passion is this very topic, and I know he's worked on projects in Maine and he's worked on projects in New York. Uh, I'm not sure there's much of this kind of thing in New Hampshire, but, um, but any case, we'll see what he says.
Thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome. So, that, that's all I have.
If I may, while we're still on the facilities topic, not to move away from that too quickly because I'm enjoying thinking about the partnership with the town and all and the potential that's there for savings, but just on the facilities thing with the school, I just wanted to, um, thank the two Chris's in the back row, Chris Andruski and Mazzoni, for, for guiding us on that tour tonight. Our, our meeting did, I'm not sure if we've really stated it, that we started our meeting tonight at 6 o'clock at the school with the tour. And also, um, I appreciate David Foltz coming from the budget committee. The, the budget committee was invited, and he was able to make it this evening, so I really appreciate, um, having him there.
Thank you for noting that. Thank you, guys. Okay. All right, so now we're going on to the program, which is reorganization of committee assignments.
Do you have that?
I don't.
You don't?
No. I thought it was going to be part of the thing. Actually, you know what?
I sent it, I sent it back to you and said, "I don't think I've got all of these right."
No. I, I have the one I wrote on.
Well, maybe you could, you could read them at least, so people know tonight.
That's my dad. I'm sorry. I didn't realize. One of my many...
As we talked on the phone, and I, and I didn't take notes, so I did it from memory.
Yeah, 'cause I think you were in your car.
I was on the side of the road, yes.
You were on the side of the road. Um, let's, let me make sure that these are the correct ones. So, obviously, I mean, you guys can write them down, but we'll, I will email them. Um, they didn't really change that drastically, but, so Chair of the School Board? Me. Vice Chair, Cliff. School Board Budget Committee, I'm going to ask Cliff to stay on that because that's already started. Alternate to the Budget Committee, Nathan? Would you be interested in? I mean, that would only be if, if Cliff could just not bring himself to make it.
With such capable hands right behind me, I might, yeah, come down with something.
We have another one that's School Board Rep to the Efficiency Committee, which we don't really know if that's even still around, but if there is, it would be me and Gail. Would you mind? I mean, because it's kind of like, we don't even know if there's going to be another meeting. And then School Board Rep to Seacoast Learning Collaborative. I jockeyed these around a little bit. Nathan, do you already go to those meetings? So, unless that's something that you had your heart set on?
No, that's not.
During the day, too, so that, yeah.
Okay. Um, School Board Rep to Seacoast Educational Services was Christine still. Um, School Board Rep to Seacoast School of Technology, Gail, you're already there, so...
Yes.
Is that still work for you?
I, I think so.
Yeah, okay, good.
I'm, I'm very impressed with what they're doing.
It was a good group, wasn't it?
It was, it was great, yeah.
Um, another one that Meg had was the Delegate to New Hampshire School Board Association. So, I put Nathan in there. Are you already part of that?
I never have been. It would be, it'd be a pleasure, I think.
And then the only other one was the School Board Rep for Liaison with Town Council, and I put Cliff in there.
Okay.
But, I mean, we've never really had to do that. I mean, we might have to. And then everything else just pretty much remained the same. So, I, I did edit this, and I thought I emailed it to you, but I will make sure that it, you can have a nice clean copy without my chicken scratch on it. You want to take it?
If I can work off of that?
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Yep, my fault.
I'm glad I brought that with me, though. All right. Now, we go on to the opening of the school reports. So, the first is Tom Higginbotham. Hello?
I have a handout for you.
We love handouts.
Do you want to pass it around?
Yeah.
Chris, I only have seven.
They can check.
Thanks. Thanks for your altruism there, Jim. Uh, what I, what I handed you was, uh, just, uh, enrollment numbers for the year, and I'll get to those in a second. But, uh, you know, as Jim mentioned and as I said in the video, really a, a really smooth start to the school year. Personally, it, it's, uh, it's felt a lot different being the second year, I feel like I'm seeing in three dimensions now. Um, you know, I know the people, I know the, the kids, uh, I know the staff. So, it's, it's been, uh, it's been nice to have that, uh, additional perspective of a year of learning under my belt. So, that's, that's been wonderful. I've got a couple of things to share with you tonight. I want to talk about enrollment, our new staffing, some of the changes to, um, our programming and our technology. The first thing I shared with you was just kind of a picture of our enrollment, and let me just kind of explain what you're looking at. In the first column, you're looking at, uh, just the different grades, pre-K through 5. The second was the, um, the second column, the projected enrollments. That's what we used, um, last year when we were thinking about staffing and allocating our staffing. And in the next column, the 2013-14 actual at, uh, August 30th, that's what we actually have. And so, if you look at that, they're actually dead on. They don't look dead on, but the reason is, if you look at pre-K, projected was 40, actual was 29. Over the year, that actual, that pre-K number is going to increase. And that's just because in pre-K, as kids turn three and come to our attention, they get enrolled or they move in. And so, last year, we started with, um, just under 29. We ended up with 30. We had 16 move-ins last year in the pre-K. So, um, they look overall a little bit different, but pretty much the projections were pretty, pretty well on, except for a couple of variances, um, in individual grades, but overall the numbers are, are pretty good. And then I've got listed there in the next column, just the number of classes we have at each grade level, uh, average class size in 2013-14, and then for comparison, our average class sizes in 20, last year. And if you look at our class sizes, again, the, um, the pre-K numbers, those will change as we have move-ins and we will have those. So, those we expect to be similar because we're pretty much at capacity in terms of space. And then as you look across, there are some, some notable changes. You probably noticed the first grade. We went from 18 to 20.6. Second grade, we reduced from 17.6 to, or we went from 15.6 to 17.6. And a few other small increases and decreases, but, um, just in general, those are some of the, um, overall big picture, kind of what we're looking at for enrollment numbers and class sizes, and I just wanted you to, to be aware of that. It's, um, from my perspective, there was no surprises. We, our, our projections were, were dead on and, and we planned for those, so just wanted to share with you those numbers. And one, one other thing about enrollment that, um, has been alluded to, will be alluded to a couple more times tonight in various pieces, um, you know, we had a lot of, uh, special education move-ins over the summer, um, particularly in the last week before school. I don't know if it's because we, uh, we opened school earlier than usual, but we had about, uh, at the elementary, and, and we love having them, we had about seven identified kids move in, um, in the last week, four of whom came with IAPs requiring a one-on-one paraprofessional support. We love having those kids. What it means staffing-wise is there's a lot of last-second, um, shuffling, but, but the way I view it, it's, we get it done. It, it's the first couple of weeks of a little bit of, of crazy as you adjust for schedules and when, when, uh, staff can have their lunches and, and who's going to get, where's the best place for the kids and, and things like that. But after a couple of weeks, and we're pretty much there, you get settled down and, and things level out. But, um, it, you know, as I've talked with Jim and as I've, I've talked with pretty much everyone in, in the community, uh, Gene and, and Chris O'Callahan, you know, no one's ever seen this many move-ins this late in the year with this, this high a set of needs. So, I just wanted to point that out, too. You'll hear a little bit more about that. And, you know, a lot of those move-ins had, uh, some pretty high, uh, medical needs, so feeding tubes and things like that. So, um, we, again, we are so blessed that we, and I'm so thankful that is the, the district philosophy, to, to, to do whatever we can to get those kids in our classroom because they're part of our community. And I love it. So, I'm, I'm appreciative of that. I just wanted you to be, be aware of some of the realities that, that come with that. New staffing, we, uh, some of those, uh, were last minute because of these very positions, but we have, uh, six new paraprofessionals, and I'm not going to go through all the names. We have two new classified. I'll, I will note that, uh, Candace Buell, uh, is, uh, our secretary. She, uh, replaced Edie. Karen Doyle was a teacher with us for a long time, and she is now our reading instructor. So, we're lucky to get her back as an instructor. She's a certified teacher, lots of reading experience, and a, um, classified position that reading instructors support. You know, um, Tony mentioned one of the updates. She mentioned last year, some of the cuts we made. One of the, the positions we changed was, um, as the Joyce Stevens, the reading specialist, certified, she retired, and we chose to, um, the board, um, we chose to hire a, a reading instructor instead of a, a certified reading, um, specialist. And we got Karen Doyle, who's a, you know, a certified teacher, lots of reading, uh, expertise, so we're really pleased to do that. Other, uh, certified staff, Jean Burke came over from the high school. She'll be doing our computer classes. Took three people to replace, um, Danielle Cullenane, who's off on a year of sabbatical. Three folks coming in a couple of days a week. We also got the return of Erica Fitz, a teacher with us, and then Shannon McSpirit, um, was hired, uh, to, uh, take on the position that was vacated when Amy Rossi, um, took on the data manager position. So, those are some personnel things. Technology, um, I, I think I can finally say, we're at a place where, um, people rely on technology. It's going to be there. We're up. It's reliable. It's something that people can count on. And at this year last time, uh, we couldn't say that. So, I'm, I'm really pleased that we're there. A lot of the, the credit goes to Jason and, uh, Chris, the new tech folks. They're just, they've just been outstanding in getting us up. But it's also, um, the generosity of the, the board and the public for, uh, supporting the technology purchases that we have, the laptop cart, laptops for teachers, uh, new computer lab, and then also the generosity of the donors that were alluded to earlier for our document cameras. And just a couple, really two other things to mention, uh, we, we took all the reading folks who were spread out throughout the building, and because some of them were spread out, when, when the reading folks needed to do their support services, if there, if they were grabbing first graders in their offices at the other end of the building, it was two choices. One, get those little legs to walk about 10 minutes, in which you've wasted about a third of their reading support time, or give them their support in the hallway. And very often, these are kids for whom, um, you know, a fluttering leaf could be a distraction. And, um, and so, we're really pleased that they're, they're all centrally located, that walk isn't as far, and they're able to collaborate. We've given them some, uh, planning time together, and, um, they're all in the same place.
Are they providing these services in the hallway in between when students are going to and from their specials or their unified?
Sometimes. No, not anymore. That's not happening anymore.
Okay.
That's not happening anymore. No, no, no. That's how it used to be. I mean, our, our space was so limited and our, our time, but we've been able to, um, hugely trim that down.
Are they able to utilize empty classrooms instead of hallways?
Yes.
While a class goes to, like, their art class, they could give reading instruction in a more private?
Yes, and in fact, Amy Rossi, who I'm going to talk about next, um, last year, she put together basically a schedule of who's absent, or who, who's out of the classroom when, and staff were able to utilize that.
And that, that's, that's the priority, is having them in a classroom that's not being utilized over being in the hallway?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that, yeah, absolutely. And then finally, I wanted to talk about, uh, Amy and, and, uh, our use of data, and it, it's just getting off the ground, but, um, that's just something we're really excited about. We have a ton of data. We don't use it nearly as well as we can. But I know that at this point next year, um, I'll be able to say to you the same thing I'm saying now about data as I just said about technology. We're going to be using it, and it's going to be reliable. We're going to be using it to not only, um, we already do a decent, a pretty good job of identifying kids individually and using the data to help us, uh, tailor their instruction. We're going to do an even better job with that, but then we're also going to be looking at our big-picture data much better, so. And Amy's going to facilitate that by basic data literacy conversations that we have with staff, and then also with basically getting them the data, which is there, but is sometimes not as intuitive to access as, um, as we'd like. And in my experience, really the key thing is, people like data, it's just they don't like a huge pile of spreadsheets. They like it in a form that's usable to them.
So, she's going to, like, make it that way for them?
Yes. Yeah, we've already done some work with that. The synthesizer.
Yes, the synthesizer. Can you tell us some forms of the data that the teachers are, are going to have access to?
Well, they, yeah, I mean, it's, it's the forms of data that they, they have had access to, but really, like I said, we're, and this is very common, there's so much data.
That's the thing.
Right. And so, things like the Ames Web, which is a literacy assessment, um, DIBELS, um, another early literacy assessment, NWA, which is a, and these are, we have, we have a lot of standardized tests that we use, but we don't use. I mean, we give, but we don't use to the full capacity that we could.
So, would you be able to maybe determine which forms of assessment you'll be using instead of?
All of them? Yeah, that's a part of it.
But that's a, that's a lot of assessing for these, these small kids.
It is. And, and, and there's, there's some redundancies. We're not actually, I would say, we're not terribly over-redundant in our use of data, I would say. Um, there is some, but I, I don't think we're overre, I mean, w, we're going to get more efficient, but that's not the, the chief area of concern, I, I would say. But there's also, um, you know, we use our Scott Forstman, uh, regular, um, assessments But there's also, you know, we use our Scott Forstman regular assessments that teachers use. And there's also teacher assessments. There's also plenty of room. It's not just about numbers. There's plenty of room for teacher, just anecdotal data, qualitative data that, you know, fills in the pictures, fills in the details that numbers can't always do.
And the reading program, is it Reading Street?
It's the Scott Forstman, yeah. And there are different components that we use for different levels, but yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Just one comment that I knew summer vacation was over when I got your first week.
The roar!
Oh, no!
But it was good.
It was good!
I felt the energy, it was wonderful.
But I don't want it to be associated with the end of summer. I mean, I know there's the reality, but what?
Thank you.
It was a sign of a new beginning.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
Frost tonight is gonna be a sign of the end of summer, I think.
Well, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, Chris Andruski.
Close, not here. Good evening. Most of my report, you guys got to see on the tour, but I'll do a virtual tour for those people at home. The summer was very condensed with construction happening as our teachers were leaving, literally the day that they were leaving, construction was happening, and it was ceasing as they were coming in. So it was kind of a bookend to the beginning and the end of summer. With that said, we had 21 different areas that were worked on in our building this summer, in a matter of two months, 12 weeks, and they got it done. It was amazing. And I'm just gonna highlight for those people at home, and you'll get to see it again on the opening day video. It did take a lot longer than necessary, but I thought it was important to highlight the many changes that the building, you know, had over the summer. If you start in our main entrance, we have tile coming in. And the purpose of that tile coming in the main entrance, it makes it less of a trip hazard. We had an old grate that had been put in there years ago. It's been rusted out. Water was staying there and it became a trip and a spill, slip hazard for staff and students and any community member that came into our building on a wet day. When you walk in and you head down our main corridor towards the guidance wing, the guidance wing, school resource officer, nurse's office, and then the hallway heading down to the gymnasium, all were completely redone over the summer with new ceilings, new electrical work, and then some plumbing that led upstairs. So they all have brand-new ceilings right now for this year. As you head down that hallway, going down to the band and library, that ceiling is completely redone with electricity, new HVAC system, new plumbing. Coat of paint put on the wall because the stairwell that was leading down from room 225 was taken out of the hallway. That was part of the science egress, so that stairway was taken down because it was going into a hallway, which is against code, so that has been removed. In the bandroom, the HVAC system has been taken off the floor and put up in the ceiling with air conditioning and with heat now placed in that bandroom, which now gives a true multipurpose room in our building, where we can hold staff meetings and not be sweating, you know, in the middle of June or the beginning of the school year, or hold band concerts to a larger capacity and people aren't dying because of the, you know, the weather inside of our building. Move into the library, library completely redone with a new HVAC system, new plumbing, new electricity, new fresh paint and a new ceiling in there as well. And that also is the same for rooms 115, which was a, is now an open computer room in our school. Also 114, which is the special ed, high school special ed classroom on the back of the library, and also room 116, which is our reading classrooms on the back of the library. All those were completely redone with a new ceiling and new electricity and new data for all of our computers. As we move upstairs, we talk about the majority of the major changes. Major changes happen in the chemistry room, our life science classroom and our biology classrooms. The chemistry classroom got a, the skylight got redone, the fixtures around it, so it's holding in place so there's not any leaking come through. We got a brand-new floor, brand-new ceiling put into room 214, which is the chemistry room. They have a new chemistry storage area with a new fume head, as Dr. Hayes spoke about earlier, which would be in next week and then will be installed on September 27th. So September 27th, that room will be complete as the fume head will be installed. Also, in the new designs, it gave us more storage area as there is now two more areas to store our glassware and chemicals in room 214. To connect 214 with a proper egress, there's a hallway that was created that was between 214 and room 225. And that's highlighted a lot on the tour that you'll see when you see at home. Along with that, there is a new science meeting area, which used to be a bypass area from rooms 214 into room 215. So that is completely redone. Electricity is now cased in and it's a new storage area for, again, for science, all science teachers, not just the chemistry lab. Upstairs as well, in 225, it is now the home of world language because that room was shortened by, I believe, eight to 10 feet before the corridor that was added to go down to that room. So that is a new ceiling, new electricity, new plumbing, new floor, new fresh coat of paint, new walls in that room. Also, the doorway, as we referred to as Skeletor, has been removed because that went into the stairwell. Again, that was against egress, so that has been enclosed and it's barely noticeable except for the fresh paint on the outside. As you move to 227, as many of us referred to as Greg Thayer's classroom for years and years, is now home of our new biology, anatomy, physiology classroom. And it's basically a brand-new room, except for the back lab tables, two lab tables, the entire new casework, new tables, new lights, new floor, fresh coat of paint, and new electricity and plumbing has been installed in that classroom. With that, we had the opportunity to finally move middle school beyond the double doors. So middle school is now actually all in one section of the building. Before, seventh grade always was part of a high school. So they'd mix in, and again, our kids are great, you know, nothing ever happened. But someone that's always concerned like me, I wanna have our younger kids separated from our older kids, so that was able to happen. And then also finally, the custodial crew got an upstairs storage area, which really helped save us on man-hours and moving equipment up and down the stairs or with the lift. So that storage area is nice and now we have two different places, one upstairs and one downstairs, that the custodials do can save their, put their equipment. Also new, the gym floor was new. Again, that wasn't something that we paid for. That was something that was a correction from the company that had done it years prior. The custodial staff put fresh coats of paint in both teachers' rooms and reorganized in there, so it's more functional. What else? Those are the major areas of the building that would be highlighted in our video, but I wanted to highlight during the change as well. In regards to staff, there was 18 new staff members that started with us on the first day of school. With that included three interns that are teaching for the first semester, eight paraprofessionals and seven new teachers. We also are lucky to have three student teachers join us from UNH as of today. So it's a busy place with a lot of new faces. Currently, we have 203 middle school students and 241 high school students as we opened up, the numbers as current as 2:30 this afternoon.
Can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
I just wanna clarify for people at home that you said how many, you said new teachers. I don't want people to think that we hired a bunch of new people.
additions, yeah, replacements, they're not addition.
They're just replacements of people that had.
They're new to our district.
They're new to our district, but not new to our budget, if you put it that way.
No, they're not, correct, correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying the shock factor out there right now.
Yeah, I'd be like, what? All right, thank you.
You're welcome. But to talk about some of the things that happened, that's right at the start of school, this summer we had Phillips Exeter that did Summer enrichment again with our current ninth graders. So we had 14 different students that were at the safety complex, fire safety complex. So they took classes there for two weeks and then did a tour of Phillips Exeter. So that's something that's in its second year and will look to continue as we have a pretty good partnership with Phillips Exeter. Kids love it, even though they're going to school in the summer. It's an hour worth of English and an hour of math. And these kids were selected because they're the top 20% of their class and their criteria that they had to meet to be able to do the Summer enrichment program.
What was the, remember, what was the reasoning? Because it used to be offered to juniors as well?
We did. We offered it to juniors and, we offered it to incoming juniors and incoming freshmen two years ago.
Right.
We did it, we tried it again this year and we only, we didn't have any juniors that were willing to do it.
No one were interested.
Yeah, they all wanted to work, so.
It's my daughter's class.
So that was the reason why, just the, there wasn't as much involvement.
Okay.
We also had Freshman Academy, the second year we've had Freshman Academy, and it was a good success. Again, we did a survey after, you know, biggest thing was we loved the food, free food, and getting to know your teachers. But I thought the best part of that survey was having our students, our high school students, come back and talk them about, you know, what they wish they could have accomplished at a high school if they went back and knew. So that was the highest-ranked part of the day. Kids got to go to five different workshops for 45 minutes in this freshman academy. And that's how we do it. We talk about writing processes as a high school student, you know, new expectations when it comes to grading, what to expect as a high school student, computer access, so different things that challenge them when they leave middle school and go into high school.
I really liked the aprons the two of you wore.
Thank you. Along with Freshman Academy, that's also when we do our new teacher orientation. So we had the seven teachers there as well. And we always involve Officer Stevens, and he does a great job, an hour worth of school safety. So they get to understand the aspects of, you know, our school is safe first before we start teaching. Then at the end of that day on the 21st, we had our student council. So every student that was involved with student council or a leadership position was there for three hours, three and a half hours in the afternoon, working on how to become better leaders in our building. So before the school even started, our kids were working, you know, hard on the 21st of August. And the last thing I'd like to highlight is our school climate committee. It's very active in our building. On the first day of school, staff had a staff party welcoming them back. They also set up a welcoming board for all of our new staff. So as they walk in, it was, welcome to New Market, you're now a part of the family. So it's just those are the little things that you like to appreciate and you get to see on the first day. So that's kind of the beginning of the year report for you. Any questions?
I've got a couple.
Sure.
First is a comment, I just, I think it was a great idea. And, I mean, the Phillips Exeter program was held, what, at the public, the public?
The fires, yeah, exactly.
What a great use of the community's resources for that. And that was because the school is under construction, so there's nowhere else.
Our plan was to be able to put it in the middle school wing. But when we looked at putting firewalls in to make sure that they were safe while we, construction was going on, it was gonna become costly, so Rick Malaski graciously said, you can use my building, which is a huge facility for training. So it worked out well. Plus it was air-conditioned, so the kids loved it.
Thank you to Rick Malaski.
That's right.
The other was a question regarding the, when you were itemizing all the changes in the building. Remember some discussion earlier with regard to, we discovered in the planning process that some of the HVAC units that were on the rooftop were underutilized? And so I'm assuming that all worked out well, where that was all repurposed and balanced?
Absolutely.
And made part of the solution?
Yes, and it was nice because Eckerton Johnson is our current HV, HC contractor. So they were part of the process through this whole summer. So they knew the systems, knew what we were doing, so it was just a nice, quick, natural fit. But that was something that was discussed and happened over the summer as well.
And just to piggyback on that, we had had some discussions at past meetings where the, once we lost a dial-up line or something a couple of years ago, we lost some of the functionality of controlling different zones and units. And with all this work?
Correct.
That's now behind us.
We used to be able to run it through the custodian's laptop. He could even do it at home, so he could have access to control certain parts of the building for the HVACs, turn them off, turn them up, turn them down, depending on the climate outside. So that is now tied into what he can do again. But part of this work that they've done over the summertime, rather than having just two areas that he can do, it really can affect those new, not the new classrooms, the classrooms that have been updated through this fire and life safety work over the summer. So he can control and manage classrooms much better than he was able to before. So it's an upgrade.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Will you get me again?
I know, you're not going anywhere. Now we're gonna talk about the block schedule survey.
So I sent it to you late this afternoon, but you have it electronically. It's about 80 pages total, so that's why it didn't get printed out as well. But again, I apologize for sending it so late. But I'm just gonna summarize and let you read through, probably the most interesting part is to look at the comments at the end. There's about 15 questions we asked, staff, students, grade six through 12. And I'm just gonna highlight, when I look at when we changed to block scheduling, again, there's no research out there that says block scheduling is gonna improve your students' success by any marginal degree. Reason we did it, because we thought it was the best fit for our kids in our school and that we could offer more programming to our kids. And that's the major reasons when we did research and we compared other schools and ways that they do block scheduling, we thought this was the best fit for us. Every quarter last year, we got back together as the scheduling committee to look at, is this the right thing? And then in May and June, we discussed, is there changes that we're gonna make? Are we gonna add skinnies? Are we gonna change the format we do it? And staff overwhelmingly said, no, this block schedule works for us. Difficult part is we have two different buildings. You know, so the maturity and the sustainability of a middle school student is much different than a high school student. And that's what the dilemma that we always, we always run is trying to do one schedule for two different types of population, but we manage and we do well. Sixth graders love it because they didn't know any other difference. So when you look at their data, they overwhelmingly like the schedule because they're only concentrating about two classes every day, you know. They only knew, they knew what their homework was for the next day and only had to work about two classes. But the interesting part is when I look at what the teachers said. Teachers felt that they could be more effective instructors because they had greater amount of time, that they could work with more modalities, meaning that they could offer different types of activities through an 85-minute block than they could for 50 minutes. That they could have more engagement out of students because they could get into deeper and richer instruction because of the discussion they can ask. Rather than just posing a question and have to move through material, they could actually get into discussion pieces and let kids have more control of the class because it's 85 minutes. They were able to address a wider range of learning styles. And that's a huge part, that you're not just teaching to one type of learning style, that you're able to engage all different types of learning styles because you have 85 minutes. You can give the instructional piece and move to different types of kids and work at their level. And then the major part is the less transition and it was less hectic. You think about seven transitions a day, we're down to four. So it cuts it in half, time is greater, it's much more quiet in the building because kids aren't moving constantly every 50 minutes. What I also look at, part of that piece is the advisory piece. And this is really telling that we gotta do a better job as a high school, getting kids out to their advisories when they're struggling with their teachers. Kids really commented on that and teachers did, that they didn't send kids out enough. The way our advisory system works at the high school is they meet with their advisor on Monday. Tuesday through Friday, they're supposed to be scheduled out to those teachers that they're struggling with or want enrichment in their class. And some advisors just didn't send them where they needed to go. That kid struggled. So that's an area that we gotta get better and that'll be something that we'll challenge our staff to do. At the middle school, they loved that. They actually wanted a longer advisory because it was a social time and it was time to eat snack. At the high school, the biggest thing that we saw is that the kids that use it effectively, it was a way for them to catch up or reconnect with their teachers. And that's the wording that they use, catch up or reconnect. I missed a quiz, I don't wanna fall behind, I can go do an advisory, make up that quiz, or I can get extra instruction before I have to take that quiz. So those were two major components for those kids that use it effectively.
Didn't we increase the advisory time too?
No, it really wasn't. We used to do advisory and then snack attached to it. Now it's all just condensed into one time. It's really the same amount of time.
How long is it?
It's, it goes for about a half hour.
So about 30 minutes?
Yeah.
So it was maybe like 25 before?
Yeah, now with the greater passing time, we picked up two minutes. You know, before we had three minutes in between, now we have five, so. You pick up two minutes, I believe, but it's not significant.
So the students aren't saying that there's not enough time to do the thing that they need to?
No. High school students, it was about right. It was about right time. High school teachers was the right time. Middle school teachers was the right time. Middle school students, they wanted longer time. That's how it went across the board. Because a lot of them, they take their advisories out too in the middle school. It's not the same format as high school. It's a way to be social, it's a way to connect, it's a way to check on kids. And a lot of them get out for a walk break or a movement break, which those middle school developmentally really need. So it's an organized team time is what we really refer to it as.
Could you explain, like, maybe just for people that are at home, like?
Sure.
What the process is for them to ask for time with their teacher or for the teacher to ask?
Sure, for a high school student?
Yeah.
Yeah. So on Monday, they go in and check in. Each high school teacher has about eight to 10 kids that they have for their advisory. On Mondays, they check with them, they can see their entire schedule. So for example, I'll use Ashley. Ashley needs extra help in chemistry. She knows that Tuesday through Friday, she can schedule herself with Mr. Fabiano, the teacher in chemistry, to be able to go get extra help during that advisory time, Tuesday through Friday. There's a set amount of slots, so not every, not 50 kids can go there. So it's like, I believe it's 20 kids per advisory can go get extra help.
Is it like an online thing that they can go in?
Yeah, it's a private, it's a separate system that we use. It's called enriching students. So actually, all it does is just houses advisory and it sends kids to where they need to go. It takes the attendance during that time and that's how we track kids to where they need to be. Yep.
So the students, there's a certain responsibility?
Students work with their advisor.
The student themselves to do that as well?
Exactly, and that's our goal, that it becomes all student-driven. You know, year one, it was a lot of, you know, peppering them to go to the right places. But by fourth quarter, like, I'm struggling, I need to go get help. So they're starting to take that self-advocacy. So that's the intent and hopefully we'll continue to see it grow.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I mean to stop you.
It's fine.
How does block scheduling, you feel, does it benefit students with ADD, ADHD, students with special education needs? Is it more beneficial for them to be sitting in a class for 80 minutes?
It all depends on the instruction.[1725.91] Uh, I wouldn't say a time limit has anything to do with it. If you have good instructional strategies in your class, and that kid is engaged, it doesn't matter how long it is, if it's thirty minutes or if it's eighty-five minutes. Um, you'll know when you walk into a classroom, a kid that, that we know has ADD or struggles from it, if there's many different types of activities, so they're getting natural movement breaks, and you're switching topics, you wouldn't even know that they would have any type of, of trouble paying attention at all.
So for plant, you know, just from a teacher's perspective, thinking about a, an eighty-minute block of time, it's a lot of planning and preparation for that? As well as meeting with your, the team of teachers that you work with and share students with? Do these teachers have common prep times on a regular basis with each other?
Yes, they do.
So that they can prepare and discuss?
At the middle school level, they do. At the high school level, it depends, that they might have someone in their department, but not specifically with all the science teachers. At the middle school level, they do. They have eighty-five minutes of common planning time, which is common planning time for team time, and also personal prep time, uh, every single day. And they, you know, some days they choose to have eighty-five minutes for personal, sometimes they, they choose to do forty-five minutes of team time, and then do personal time. So we really allow them to choose how they wanna use that, that, that prep time. Yup. Any other questions?
My only question kind of goes back to, to the prior topic, I apologize.
Sorry.
Is the, um, the opening day video on the, on the website?
Yes. Not on ours, but it's on channel thirteen.
Oh.
Is it linked to, is it a link to it?
Is there a link on ours?
Oh, good.
Okay.
I couldn't find it quickly, so.
Yeah.
Just curious.
So I didn't have a chance to look at this stuff before you came, so I'm sure it's in there, but I just wanted to ask, the, there was the issue of some students feeling like teachers were giving them more work because they had. So was that addressed in there? Did you hear any comments about that?
You'll see, there, again, um, those teachers that took advantage to get the training, of changing from a traditional schedule to a block schedule, there, there was no problems. Those teachers, I know how to do it, they'd fall back onto some old skills. So it was, it's a constant working with them to give them the skills to properly prep, uh, how do you gauge different activities throughout an eighty-five minute block? It became, "I've got one type of strategy and I taught for eighty-five minutes." That became really overbearing for some kids, as it would for me as well. So it's working with teachers. Our goal, when Chris and I are doing observations, is see three different activities through an eighty-five minute block minimally. Good teachers are doing five. You know? And that is, you know, I, I, give you an example, they're gonna do an opening, uh, when every kid comes in, they've got some assignment that they're gonna do to open the class, it might be five to ten minutes. Then you might do a, a ten-minute instruction, then you might do ten minutes a group, then you're gonna get back and do some pair share, uh, and then you're gonna do individual, um, discussions with the kids, then you, you share out, and then you leave. So that's how a, a class that's really well structured, and that takes time, um, goes well. And those teachers, um, and again, you know, I, I wouldn't wanna put Ashley on the spot, but I, I would say that, that she'd probably echo, when she sees it from those teachers, classes go by like that. A teacher that's standing up there and has one modality?
Okay.
It's gonna be a very long time.
That's a good prep for college.
Yup.
That's right.
But I, I think what I was, I don't know, I was feeling like, or hearing, that teachers, not just the actual instruction time, but they were ta- they were feeling like, "I'm not gonna see these kids again for another day, because there's a day in between." So they were gonna load them up with extra homework.
I think we saw some of that.
You did?
And we need to address that more administratively. You know, a couple of other things that we learned out of our block schedule that we've, we've addressed this year is, is athletic schedules, especially this time of the year. Uh, we were letting kids leave at a one-thirty, and it happened, you know, typically on the same day, so you lose kids twice a week, because they be traveling. So, um, Kristen Krantz did a nice job. I said, "I don't wanna see kids leaving before two o'clock if they don't have to." I think there's only twice, and it's because of golf trips. Golf is, you, you camp, there's no lights on many golf courses. So when you're traveling to Franklin, they have to start at four, that's a long trip. So I believe we cut it down to two times where they had to leave before two o'clock. And I believe there's only one soccer game, because that's in Hinsdale, that they have to leave before two o'clock. Most games are, are after, you know, two o'clock are they leaving, so they're not missing as much time. 'Cause that was a problem that we saw, and we didn't see that when we set up the schedule of athletics and how that would impact teachers. So we try to correct it. So every year, our goal is to get better. And hear what the, the teachers and kids say, and, and try to address it.
As far as fire drills and all those safety things that you need to do, you're not doing them all on one day, you're equally dispersed?
We try not to, it depends who you ask, but, uh, um, we try not to. But again, we're at the mercy of, of the fire chief when he shows up and says, "There's a fire drill." I can't say, "No, it's a black day, we just had something."
But when you plan in-house, you know?
Yeah, when we plan in-house, we definitely look at that, yup. Yeah, and it's different times, um, of the day to, to try and get them as well.
Well, that actually brings to mind a question about the new way the kids are moving around the building now, because of the way that, so has there been any?
Yup, we redesigned.
Rules?
Yup. Every teacher on first day, that was part of the, the orientation we would do. With new teachers and all staff is, "Take your kids out, because there is doing different fire routes." Heinemann Company, uh, the architects, I mean, Heinemann, uh, Herriman, excuse me. Herriman, our architects, they did a nice job. They drew up four different plans, so anyway you looked at the classroom, kids would get out. And that was dispersed to every staff member of, if their classroom was, uh, was changed over the summer of how to get out of there. Uh, so we've changed it. And when we do our first fire drill, the actual, um, fire chief will be there to look at how things are going at any time.
Sure, yeah.
Yup.
Alright, great.
So with, I just, going back to the thoughts about, um, teachers loading up on homework with the classes they meet every day, a lot of the math classes meet on a daily basis? Is that?
Anything that's Algebra I or below. They meet every single day.
But so for an English class, I, I would expect that there'd be an expectation that if you're reading The Grapes of Wrath, you don't just read it the night before a black day.
Correct.
It's that you, you get the assignment that you're, you know, Steinbeck every night.
Right. Yup. Yeah, that's, that's what we encourage, and that's the, what we put to kids.
Right.
You know, that, here's your more time management, but again, it's working through those, those little bumps on the way. And same with teachers, not just loading up. But we've heard who, who tended to, to do that last year. I, I think this is a new year, and people have planned a lot differently, uh, 'cause they've experienced it for a year. So it's something that we'll, we'll keep an eye on administratively.
As Kelly's point was earlier, that about learning to live in a college environment, you're not gonna wanna be reading all of your assignments before your Tuesday class.
Correct.
So it's, it's part of learning to, towards the next steps. Great.
Great. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Now, let's see, we're moving on to correspondence.
I think, well, the adequacy update, that, that can be referred to later on. I think Christine's last piece in her budget update, uh, business department update is adequacy. The DOE review of IDA compliance. Jean, would you like to say a few words about that? We just got the letter just a little while ago.
This is a good thing, we like to talk about.
This is a good thing, that's why we wanna say something. Um, every year, the, um, uh, school, the Department of Education at the state level looks at their state performance plan, which is something required by the federal government, and the state performance plan, better known as SPP, is, um, has a, a bunch of indicators in them. There, there are different areas where the state has to make certain amounts of progress and show certain amounts of, of success in different measured areas. There's, there's about sixteen, eighteen of them. Seven, I think there's seventeen, actually. And, um, every year, every school district gets graded on them. There are things like timeliness of special education evaluations, that they're all completed within the legal time limit. Um, the fact that, um, all of our preschool children are in program by their third birthday. Things like the fact that we're all compliant with our transition services for students, and that tr- students are, have the appropriate transition plans and their right EPs at the right ages, things like that. And, um, for the second year in a row, we got scored a hundred percent.
Woo-hoo!
So, so that's a good thing. We're very happy about that, and we will strive to do the same thing this coming year as well. Any questions?
No.
Straight A's.
Thank you to that. Yes.
Good job.
Alright. So now we're gonna go into FY fourteen budget update. Is that, you ready?
Yes, and I have a presentation, so if you wanna grab a seat in the audience, and we'll dim the lights.
Are there any specific, any specific handouts that pertain to what you're doing, or is it just that?
No, I provided you the slide as well.
Okay.
We'll look at it when we come back.
Okay.
I don't wanna shut the lights.
I don't know, I gotta, I gotta get the camera. I don't have to leave from the shows?
Yes, everybody in spot. Let's just wait for it to get up and running. You might have the obstructed view. Okay.
Oh, no.
Alright, good evening. I'm Christine Blume, I'm the business administrator for the district. I'm just gonna provide, um, a special education update, um, for our FY fourteen budget. We have quite a few changes. Here's the agenda, what I'm briefly gonna talk about is the FY thirteen and closing that out, 'cause that's gonna kind of roll right into my FY fourteen, so it'll be a great segment. I'll update you on, um, the trust funds. I provided you a, um, a sheet with the trust funds, but just in this presentation alone, I'm just gonna be talking about special education. We'll also be talking briefly about out-of-district placements, new students, new and additional staff. So the FY thirteen budget, we wrapped up, we, um, have eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars that we unexpended from our operating budget, which means we just didn't spend that, um, those funds. We had a hundred and seven thousand, nine fifty-nine in unanticipated revenues. Um, I've listed the three main reasons why we had, um, additional unanticipated revenues. Majority of it came from Medicaid, catastrophic aid, and we had a couple charter school special ed students, so we got some funds for that. So the total fund balance, and this is unaudited, 'cause we have not had our audit yet, is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six. As you may recall, on the March two thousand, um, thirteen meeting, we had three warrant articles which used, um, fund balance monies. They were the Special Education Trust Fund, the Technology Trust Fund, and the Repairs and Maintenance Trust Fund. So it's a quarter percent, or up to fifty thousand dollars. Um, and I did verify this with the DRA, that we get the up to the higher, higher rate, so fifty thousand dollars will be going into each of those three funds, leaving us with the forty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six to re- to reduce the taxes. Okay? Go ahead. Can I talk to you a second? Yeah, absolutely.
So, I just don't want people to get their own impression of the fund balance. There's a lot of people that think we don't budget properly, and we have all this extra money at the end, and, so can you talk about why we end up having to have that?
Well, the eighty-nine thousand is from the original, original operating budget. So that is just, we had a budget freeze, because we had some unanticipated, um, special education costs, so I froze the budget. On top of this year, it was unique, because we also had a software financial system conversion. So not only did I have to manage the buzz- budget very closely because of the special ed, but it was also because I had half my year in one program and half my year in the other program. And it, so, let me tell you, I had a lot of sleepless nights, because it was just trying to mirror some of the things that, you know, with new software can, you know, go astray and, and things like that. So, you know, that is a very, um, I would say, anything of one percent and under for your, for a fund balance from the operating budget is very good. That is a very good use of your funds. The hundred and seven thousand is from unanticipated revenues. That is where the game becomes tricky, because for, for Medicaid, we never know what the students are gonna be when moving in, what their, um, expenses are gonna be. So that's kind of, it's, it's a catch. So you kinda have to play a little, a game with that. Catastrophic aid, again, it's from the prior year, so we get reimbursed into this year. So again, that's very difficult. In charter school, seven thousand, we just don't know. So, we try to be conservative, because it's always better to have unanticipated revenues than to have a deficit. So, um, but yeah.
Christine, I, I would, I would offer up that, I mean, I respect the suggestion that, you know, anything less than one percent. The reality is on fifteen and a half, fifteen-three, whatever the operating budget core was, on over fifteen million dollars, to be down within ninety thousand is probably, I mean, I would suggest it's not good. It's, it could potentially be a little scary. I mean, you've had to really manage, and I, I respect the work that was done by the superintendent's office and the business office to do that. Anything in the one to even two percent range, when you talk about that much money, is a reasonable, remember that when we prepare these budgets, we're eighteen months out from some of what we're contemplating, and when you think about the volatility of the, of the delivery of its instruction and education to all of the populations that we serve, you did really well, but I, I'm just one voice, but you don't have to be less than one percent to impress me. That's a little tight from my, from my, my preference.
Yeah, my goal is, is, is one percent, because that just tells me, my administrative staff and my staff, we're really utilizing all the funds efficiently in the best that we can, so, because we want, we're, we're all taxpayers in our own town, so we all wanna make sure we're using it wisely, so.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely. Okay, so the special ed trust fund balance, you'll see, that's why I have this anticipated right here, because we have not been audited, and it's, we don't have the funds there quite yet, so that will all come. But, so we started, um, the, the balance started at the one oh eight, and then you can see our deposits, and then we had some, you had an expense here in two thousand thirteen, a little interest in the anticipated fifty thousand dollars from the fund balance from this year. We're looking at two hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Okay? So, and the cap on this fund is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay? And this will just all be tied in in the end. So, new students with disabilities. I know you've heard some different numbers tonight, but the reality is, we have seventeen new students in the district with disabilities. Okay? Twelve at the elementary, one at the junior high school, and four at the high school. We also have unanticipated, or I'll refer to as not budgeted, um, a charter school student, which that expense alone is thirty thousand dollars. We also have two out-of-district students that, um, came into the district last year, but it was post-budget. So we did not have that in the FY fourteen budget. And that expense, you probably can't see, is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand and eighteen dollars. So you can see those can be very big hitters.
Does that include transportation?
This number right here?
Yeah.
No, it does not. But we had enough money in the transportation to cover it, so we were okay there.
Can I just ask?
No, go ahead.
This is students with IEPs, not five oh four students?
Correct.
Okay.
I just want to clarify on the charter school student. That, we don't pay for people to go to charter schools. What that is, is if a student with an IEP goes to a charter school, we have to provide proper services for that child.
That's correct.
That thirty thousand is providing the special ed service.
Only for special ed students with IEPs. Okay, this is just a recommended staffing. So with the new students coming in, we would need five new para one-on-one positions. Okay, we need, we need three at the elementary, one at the junior high, one at the high school. We also recommend one new nurses assistant, which would be an additional para. So the total cost I have listed below are the positions. We also have, we also need a teacher of the deaf, which is thirty-eight thousand dollars roughly. The nurses assistant, which we have not hired, but we're projecting to be twenty-one thousand. And then the five paras on one-on-one, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars. Okay? So that gives us a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
Now, the one-on-one paras here, because the incoming IEPs require that?
That's correct.
Are these from out-of-state IEPs or these in New Hampshire IEPs?
Jean, do you know specifically to that? I don't know that answer.
These are all students that moved in from other communities in New Hampshire. We had some very severe disabilities move in. We have, we had a student come in with a traumatic brain injury. We had a student come in with, who uses a wheelchair, has a cognitive impairment, tube-fed, not toilet-trained. We also have a student who is significantly autistic. We had a little one come in, another one who's very autistic. And we had another student come in who's not even five, not even special ed identified. It's a five oh four student, but she has, the little one has significant diabetes and requires about four to five blood checks a day. She's not, not in good control diabetic-wise. Her blood sugar's all over the place, so the nurse has to make all these checks. And although that's not a reason for the special education increase in costs, the nursing needs are very, very significant. The nurse now has seven tube feedings a day. She has this blood check that she has to do four to five times a day. It often involves treatment at the same time. She has, she's got allergies, she's got inhalers and different respiratory treatments. We have a student that has to be, her throat has to be cleared out all the time. She has so much going on that she doesn't have the time to do the typical things like height and weight and monitoring student growth and health that way, which nurses do. She wasn't even able to do that at all last year. This year, it's just wild in there. And we have a veteran nurse for only one more year until she retires, which is a major bummer. But anyway, she's a veteran nurse who's been doing this a long time. She's really expert. And she just said to me, "I can't do it anymore. I can't do it. It's not humanly possible." You also have the little ones that come in with their tummy aches and need handheld for a few minutes. You've got the one that has the boo-boo from being out at recess or that needs an ice pack or has a headache. You know, whatever it is, all of that on top of it. The room is like Grand Central Station. It's a small room. We have all these wheelchairs coming in with all the tube feedings. We now have four wheelchairs in the school with significantly impaired children. These kids need to be in their schools. It's a fantastic experience. I think our principal, Tom Higginbotham, alluded to that in a very positive, very appropriate and righteous way. We love having those kids here, and I'm proud that Newmarket can do that. It's good for the kids who are here. It's good for the students who are typically developing, who get to see and know their community members. It enriches all of us. But it is an expense and it takes a lot of nursing time. So we immediately put a substitute paraprofessional in there. And Diane Beach, our nurse, knew of someone who had some training, who already had CPR and first aid certification, and someone who could hit the ground running, so we do have a sub in there right now. And thank God, I spent about an hour in her room one day, and that was enough for me. It really is very busy in there. So that's the reason for the other, the other situation. It's just overpowering. I've never had an experience in thirty-eight years where we've had that many significantly challenging needs arrive at the last minute like that. I blame Deb Roffel because she did not put the no vacancy sign out that I told her to hang out in the front of the school. She didn't do it. Obviously, we can't do that. I'm kidding, nor would we. But nonetheless, it's Deb's fault, so.
Can I just ask a question? For the nurses assistant, the expense of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and nine, is that less expensive doing it that way with a, with that number versus getting a contracted service to come in?
Oh, wow. Oh, wow, absolutely. If you get a contracted service to come in, you're going to pay between sixty and seventy-five dollars an hour.
And that's salary in the FICA in New Hampshire time and everything, just to be clear. So it's not just salary.
Diane made it clear to me that she could cope with a paraprofessional, that she was comfortable with, that she could train and supervise, and she feels she has that individual, so.
And if you're student certified?
And CPR. That's already the case. Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Okay, budgetary impact, so this is just a summary. So we have the special ed charter school student services of thirty thousand dollars, two out-of-district students, teacher of the deaf, the nurses assistant, and the five paras, giving us the grand total of three hundred and forty-nine thousand and seventy-two dollars, which is all unanticipated, not budgeted for, for this year. So the great question, where is the money going to come from? Okay? I think we all need to start growing some money trees. So what I've come up with is a plan. So the Affordable Care Act, you've heard me talk about it. We have set aside sixty thousand dollars because we could, could have been faced with potential penalties for some of our staff members who do not meet the nine and a half percent. So we put away sixty thousand dollars to set aside. Those, I'm sure you've heard, the legisla-, oh, not the legislature, just, but the new IRS says that they are not going to impose those penalties for one additional year. So that means they're being just potentially pushed off until January of two thousand and fifteen. So we have that money to put for this. Fuel savings, as you may know, I don't know if I've updated the board, but we have negotiated a new fuel service contract for one year. We budgeted three fifty a gallon because our current, our current contract when we were doing the budget was three thirty. We actually got a new contract at three oh nine.
Wow.
Okay, substantially lower than.
Happy dance.
Yes, we're all doing happy dance. So the fuel savings is twenty-one thousand six hundred. I'm comfortable with putting that there because I did leave some additional funds, a little bit more than our average. I looked at the history, so I'm okay with having that there. Property liability insurance, again, we renegotiated with another provider. So we have a thirty thousand dollar savings for one year for our property liability insurance. So we have that. Holiday contribution with LGC, you might have heard it on the town side. It's Health Trust had a holiday contribution, is giving us a holiday contribution for surplus of funds that they had. They had roughly thirty-two million dollars, of which they have to disperse back to school districts. There's some guidelines that you have to be currently part of, continuing with the plan. We are estimated to receive roughly twenty-three thousand dollars.
Was this because of the overpayment?
It's a surplus, not for, no, we don't have an overpayment to Health Trust. It's their surplus that they actually receive. And so the Bureau of Security is mandated that they have to give those, they have to return a portion of that surplus. So that's what we're eligible for. I will tell you that I have battled with this number because there's two ways of which we can approach it. My recommendation is to take it in as unanticipated revenues so that we could then ask the board for permission to expend it at the end of the year to help us offset with our special ed costs. The other option we have is I could book it on the MS twenty-four to reduce the taxes. Okay? So it's, it's been a quandary of doing it.
Help me, LGC, is this related to workers' comp?
No, dental for us.
Oh, dental.
Dental insurance.
We've been, we were carrying Harvard Pilgrim in these previous periods, but we had.
That's health insurance.
Understood, but dental was through LGC, so that's where that came from?
Yes.
And they've given that to us as a credit against the bill in the August period or the September period, whichever.
We got a check.
You got a check.
We got a check. Yep.
So do we still have to make that decision? Or are you making that decision?
I make, I'm making a recommendation. This, because, the reason why I'm making the recommendation to do it this way, not to reduce the taxes, is because we are already in a tough situation with the budget. And my goal and the reason why I, I'm here is to, to serve the children. And so any monies that I can get for those kids now, the better off they're going to be. And so if I don't have to take twenty-three thousand dollars and cut it from the budget or find it somewhere else in that already tight budget that I have, here is it, here it is. Because to reduce the taxes, you're, might be, just don't quote me in this, looking at maybe a three cents. Okay, reduction. So, but that's the board's ultimate authority, how you want me to, to use that. The special education trust fund, we would need to pull to make us hold to three hundred and forty-nine thousand is the two hundred and fourteen. We had two, we will have two hundred and forty-four thousand. So if I take two hundred and fourteen thousand of that, we're going to have roughly thirty thousand dollars at the end of the year. Okay?
And that just leaves us with, what if someone else moves in?
Absolutely. So we are more than likely probably going to have some type of a soft freeze for the budget to try to absorb as much as we possibly can again, just like we did last year, some of those costs so we don't have to use two hundred and fourteen thousand. So this number right here is really not a finite number. That can change.
That's fluid.
Yes.
So, and that wouldn't necessarily be hit until the end?
Absolutely, that's correct. Yep. So in any way, you know, I'm always reviewing the budget, so anywhere I can find monies, we're going to, so. But that's the, the projected plan right now.
I guess I'd like to speak briefly about, a comment you made earlier about the special education trust fund and how there's a cap on that for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was a, certainly, the school board never made a decision that this hard firm number, this is what it's going to be for any of those funds. But through kind of some basic assumptions on worst-case scenario, well, a couple of kids with high education needs occurring at the exact going time in the year could be a number that would bring us into that realm. And here we are in not the scenario that maybe we use to grab at that number, but clearly the special education trust fund could be higher funded to help control situations because now we're going to be in a situation where there's very little money in that fund and it's going to be very dramatic effect on the operating budget. Or we're looking for special meeting or some other way to, to raise those funds should we need them. So I guess I'm just arguing that in the future, we might want to think about, when we talk about the special education trust fund, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is really not a big number to have in that.
Four or five years ago, the calculation that we moved to get to a two hundred or two hundred and fifty easily, that same calculation in today's costs gets us to three, three fifty or more.
Probably.
Because of the cost of out-of-place, out-of-district placements. I mean, that's, so I think that's something, I don't, I, I'm not aware, but if this was a, if it was a warrant article that established that cap at some point historically, then we should be talking about moving forward, you know.
That was just a school board guideline. It was never even something voted on, I believe, by the school board.
Then it's. Self-imposed. And I think it's good to have that and to talk publicly about it, but I think we need to talk, start talking publicly about, that's not a high enough number. But thank you for having the foresight because hopefully you can chip away without dramatically impacting the delivery of instruction and to all of our kids in regular ed classrooms and special ed services. You know, you want to do what you can without having to cannibalize the entire program, so.
Well, in my tenure here on the board, as long as I've been here, I remember we've gone to, to meetings and deliberative session and a lot, some people in the community look at that number and think, you know, it's our piggyback and why are we saving all that money? And everyone always said, "Well, there could be a chance when," and we are there now. We have hit that place where it's happened. And had we not had that foresight, what would we be doing? I mean, we, we're fortunate that we could go there if we need to. So I applaud everyone for my time for having that foresight. It could be a lot worse, I guess, is what, I mean, it's bad, but it could be a lot worse.
Special education is very fluid. It can change at any time.
Christine, you're all done, right? We should perhaps.
I am.
Sit back up.
Oh, okay.
Ooh, it's cold in here.
Huddle down here at this side of the table, plenty more.
Christine, can I ask, can you explain that twenty-three thousand to me again? What, what is that money?
You mean the LGC money?
Yes.
Yeah, it's probably.
Okay, so the holiday contribution that we received from LGC.
LGC is?
Local Government Center for our dental insurance.
Okay, and who, where did that money come from?
It comes from, it's, it's a return of surplus from Health Trust. Okay? Health Trust is the dental provider, if you will. They're called the Health Trust. They had, and correct me, Nate, I think it's thirty-two million dollars that they had in return of surplus, okay?
Through the end of their operating of two thousand and ten.
Correct. And so we have two different amounts. We have one for the two thousand and ten year and one for the two thousand and eleven year. Okay? So they're returning a total of twenty-three thousand dollars to the district, to us.
And the district being, and who paid into that?
We, we, we paid premiums, if you will, for health, for dental insurance, excuse me. All districts do pay into it. And so Health Trust has a surplus of, of money, so that's like their money that they made. And the Bureau of Security says you can no longer hold on to that much surplus, if you will. So you need to return it. So it's then determined based on our premiums, our, our enrollments and so forth for all the school districts that put into the risk pool, they get a slice of the pie back that's prorated to what their contributions are.
This Newmarket, I just, because I'm not familiar exactly with all of the inner workings, do the employees also contribute to their dental insurance?
Do they? Yes.
So is this necessarily returned to the district for the district to use? Or should a portion of this go towards, back towards the employees who put in a certain percentage?
That's a good question because that can be, that, it's really up to the district and we haven't decided that because a portion, we pay a hundred percent of a single plan and then we pay a portion towards the two-person and a family and so forth. So some percentage of that is essentially an employee could be paying into it. I guess the question is, is how do, how does one determine what portion of that return is an employee and who it is?
Well, you must have records from two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven for who was paying into this pool.
Well, who paid, but yes. But I couldn't tell you today how I would be able to determine at what percentage that I would return that to, to each person, unless you just said, "Do it across the board." But obviously, someone who's paying a two-person plan, who's paying a family plan is different, so you'd have to use some different rates and determine that. Plus, what share is, actually should go back to the district.
Well, the percentage of the shares that go back to the district is what the percent, the district pays. And then the other remaining amount is the percent that the employees have paid.
Not necessarily.
Well, I, I really think we need to look at this a little bit deeper. I'm not a dollar person, but I'm pretty sure a percentage of this twenty-three thousand dollars needs to be returned to the people who paid into it. Those being the, the district and their contribution and the employees and their contribution.
Yeah, there's, I think there's, it's interesting here in this environment because you're talking about just the dental, where the majority, the majority of coverage was provided a hundred percent cost on the district. So you do have some exposure where there were folks that were making additional contributions. If you, if you could estimate the number of employees who participate in the dental plan and look back on it to try to contemplate of the twenty-three thousand dollars, for instance, if, if roughly, if just fifty percent of that had been, if fifty percent of what we paid in, in ten, was all paid by the district and fifty percent was contributed by employees, then twenty-three would turn into eleven-five. Did I do that right? Turn into eleven-five. And then you divide by how many people. One of the great challenges that I've got with this whole conversation is that that money was taken out of them pre-tax. So it ought to go back to them taxable, which means that anybody from two thousand and ten who isn't currently on the payroll needs to be added back to the payroll. And to do that, you need to contact them, find them, contact them, get a W four signed.
It's very complicated.
All of this, and do the math for me because if it's all of this to give them seven bucks. And we need to have a conversation about practicality and how much expenses.
How much it'll cost to do it. But if this is their money and it needs to be returned.
You pay taxes every year, you pay property taxes every year. And when the town doesn't spend the last hundred and fifty thousand, they don't cut us all a check and give us our little piece back, they keep it, enroll it against the expenses of operating the district, the community another year.
And I think that's why it's up to individual districts to determine what to do with it. And a lot of the districts have determined that the fair portion of the employees that paid into it will receive a refund on it.
I think the majority of those people, those districts you'd be talking about, though, were working with health insurance claims and they were looking at checks not of twenty thousand dollars or seven bucks a person, but significantly more. So I think, I mean, for me, I'd want to know practically.
Let me put it bluntly, my district is dealing with this and I may receive up to a hundred and fifty dollars.
Absolutely.
So whether it's seven bucks, fifty dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars, if it's money that the employee paid into it and there's a refund on what was charged over, or overcharged, whatever exactly it is, we need to ensure that it goes back to the employees. A portion of what they paid into it should come back to them. However, we figure out a formula for that, I really think that that's best practice.
So you're going to do this every year from now on as a district?
If it's what's right, I would think so.
No, I'm, I guess I'm talking about what's practical. I mean, especially, I'm not sure if we have the staffing right now to provide for that. So if you have to go out and now hire some, contract somebody in to do this work, then you have the added expense. If you run this through taxes, where does the dollars come from to pay the, you know, the payroll taxes related to it? It should come from the pool of twenty-three thousand dollars we're talking about. So it's a very.
And it also includes my retirees.
It's a big conversation, I think that we should, you know, and again, for me, it becomes what's practical. And I don't have any argument, I'm, we're doing this, they're doing this in districts all over the place. Some districts are simply recognizing that because of the scale of the conversation, that they're opting to do something different. They're taking it against, they're taking for tax relief, they're taking it against the current bill. Some districts are dealing differently, districts and municipalities are dealing differently with dollars that came about from the two thousand and ten ruling of the Bureau and the subsequent two thousand and eleven operating return that now under regulation, the pools are going to have to give back every single year. And, and you can consider those things differently too. So I, I mean, I think it's something we ought to run some numbers on and look at, what kind of data do we have? And try to, try to talk about what does it boil down to. And I, I mean, I respect the argument that everybody has a, you know, everybody's got an oar in the, in the pool here, but if we really are going to go through all that work to cut checks for five or six, seven bucks for people, I think we should have a conversation about how practical that is for all the labor that would be involved in doing it.
And I have to run it for two different years because this twenty-three thousand is for two years. One's, ten thousand's from the two thousand and ten year and eleven thousand and changes from the eleven year. So not only do I have to calculate all of it, whichever way we decide, but then I have to look at who was enrolled in ten and who was enrolled at eleven. And then I have to bring in the retirees and whatnot, so I'd have to calculate it, not just once, but twice and every year. And then not only that, but I will tell you, there's also some pending lawsuits that you might have heard out there that one of the things is that you have to be, is it continuing? You have to continue in the plan in order to receive this holiday contribution. Well, there's some districts out there that are saying that that's not right, that they were paying into it, so they should get their. Well, there's some districts out there, they're saying that that's not right, that they were paying into it, so they should get their monies back. So my concern would be is, what's going to happen if they prevail in this lawsuit? Could we be paying that money back? So then if that's the case, then what do I do that I just paid, you know, this out to? So it's very complicated, it's not as simple as when we had a health change this year and we changed providers, there was a health savings between the two plans. Those credits are going back to the employees. That's clean, I mean, it's a lot of work, we haven't got there yet, but that's a pretty clean-cut, safe measure. This, there's, it's very risky and it's a lot of work. But I mean, if we were talking, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, absolutely. But to do 10,000 dollars from one year to another, just, it's your decision, and I'll be happy to do whatever you decide. But just know that there's a lot involved.
What I would like to say for purposes of this meeting tonight is that this is just a recommendation, that, you know, we can talk about this and we can investigate it further. It doesn't, I mean, it's not like we're saying you must commit that 23,000 dollars to special ed. I mean, I'm glad that you brought that up, I think that's a good thing. And, you know, maybe look into, you know, it a little bit more and see how much it would actually cost. But I think for this exercise, I'm glad that you've identified it, you know, as, as an option. I mean, that we actually do have them. I, I personally feel like it's great that we actually have some of these things that are the renegotiated contracts, you know, the, God love the IRS, you know, I mean, when would I ever say that? That they would postpone the penalties for a year, you know? I would say that because my father worked for them for 25 years, but anyways, I digress. So where else do we, do you, what else do you need from us for tonight?
So, um, let me just quickly touch upon the adequacy aid, because I know that you received the handout from, the letter from the Commissioner.
Don't we want to stay on this?
Well, yeah, what else did you want to talk about? I mean.
Because, because what, what, these are, well, the positions that she outlined in her presentation.
We have to approve, right?
Correct, I was going to have you approve it afterwards.
Like approving positions for a budget, so you do need to approve. I did want to point out a couple other things that were in your packet that people might not know here. One is that Diane Beach went to great extent of documenting, you know, her involvement with students, and you got a look at what her day can be like, and so that material was provided to the board. The other thing is, and I'm not sure all of who had a hand in doing this, I'm sure Diane did, but a draft of a job description for this school health aid. And as I put in my notes to you, I haven't had a chance to really look at it, so I'm not bringing this to you tonight for consideration, but we'll go back and digest it some more and then bring it back. But be that as it may, we've got, you know, kids in our schools. And so we really would like you to approve the recommended positions that Christine outlined. It's in one of your slides here.
Yep, and I will just review that. I'm seeking recommendation or approval for five new pair of positions and one new nurses assistant for the Newmarket School District.
Should we do these one at a time, like the five new first, and then how, is that how it moves?
I, yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's appropriate. Do, should we, we don't necessarily have to outline the cost in the motion, right?
No.
No, okay. All right, so if anyone wants to jump in. First, I just, I want to say, I simply think that what Diane Beach is doing is heroic. After looking at what you, I mean, I was reading this and I just was like baffled. And I just want to thank you for, I don't even know that you have time to even go home at the, I mean, it looks.
I don't go home on time.
No, you don't. So thank you very much. Our, our students in our school district, you know, really owe you a debt of gratitude for what you've done, so I appreciate that. All right, so now we can move on to motions, anyone?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of five new one-on-one pair of positions.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion?
And just to be clear on that, these are necessary by law in support of IEPs that the associated students have.
I move the motion to accept.
Wait, 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 we have to vote first.
We have to vote first.
If, unless you want to have a discussion, no, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right, that passes 5 to. All right, now go ahead.
Now, I move to accept the motion of the nurses assistant.
New nurses assistant.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion on that? I, I hope it is enough, I, I mean, I really, I wish we could do more. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
A nice sigh of relief.
Diane, can I ask a question? Do, do parents, if I have a child especially, am I able to come in and, and help?
Well, it takes, it takes a little bit of skill.
Okay, that's, I'm wondering, like, do, would I come and help?
It gets a little crowded in my office, so to have parents come in and try to help, you know, I'd have to train you all. And we don't have a lot of room. When they all get in there together, people are sitting out in the hall and waiting. Actually, today I thought I might need to ask you for two assistants, that's how bad it got today. But that's, hopefully we'll calm down after a while. But we haven't hit any illness yet. I only saw like five kids with five of the non-IEP kids today. So you add my normal winter of 40, I'm not sure what's going to happen then. I might ask for a parent or two, no, there's no room.
Right.
The two of us barely fit in my space.
Well, I've been in there when they've been heaving over the year.
I gotta tell you that all I have to do is pick up the phone and I have staff members coming in. So there, last year, that's what saved me, because I needed this last year. But this year, it's an impossible task, so, thank you.
How many years have you been doing what you do?
19.
19. Have you ever seen anything like this in your, no?
No, and actually, I, I do belong to the State Nurses Association, and when I go and talk to people, no one's ever heard of anything like this, so. No one is dealing with, they all have a little bit, but I've never seen anything like this, so.
Please keep us posted.
I will.
If this process doesn't get better or gets worse.
I think it's going to be really good. I have a really good person, so.
All right, cool, good.
I'm hoping I can keep her.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now are we, we're done with these slides, right?
Yes, you are, now you can do the adequacy.
I just wanted to just quickly update you.
And we've got the budget schedule too, you're going to.
If you had more questions, we can do the budget schedule.
Oh, I don't have mine with me.
Well, you got it in the packet, but I can talk about it too.
So the adequacy calculation, just so you all know, you received the draft letter.
Can I stop you one more second? I'm sorry. The teacher of the deaf, is that, do we need to?
The contracted service.
Perfect, so we don't have to, all right, we just wanted to make sure we weren't skipping that, thank you for doing, all right, sorry, go right ahead.
So the state has revised the formula to calculate the adequacy aid, and they're kind of in influx, if you will, right now. So what they're, what they're saying is my first two payments, which are September and November, are going to be based on their best estimate that they can. They're going to then revise those payments for January and April. And they're committed to say, as you can see in the letter, that it will be within with the 5% that they have noted to us on November 15th. So we're going to be budgeting that roughly about 95% of the adequacy aid, just to be on the cautious side, because we don't know, this is the first year that they're moving the form, excuse me, not moving the formula. This is the first year that they're changing the formula, so they don't have the data from the 12, 13 school year as of yet. So once they have that, they'll revise it in January for us. So that's what the adequacy letter you received is in, so. Is there any questions about that? You will see shortly on the MS-24 what that figure is, is going to look like. It's roughly, I want to say 2.2 million and 80 dollars, something like that, about 95%.
So again, this is one of those things that we have no control over.
Absolutely.
It's just what we just.
It's just for informational purposes only.
But we have to prepare our budget to absorb it if it needs to happen.
No, not in that respect, no, 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 this is just the revenue side.
The revenue, all right, good.
So it would just be, I'm just going to recommend that we budget 95% of the figure that they, they are estimating for us. So if we get anything, it'll be on the plus side.
That's good. Do you think the new formula will be more beneficial?
I do, I actually do, because it's, it's the, it's going to be the school year immediately preceding. So that is going to help, because it's going to give us more actual data based on the ADM, which is the Average Daily Membership and Attendance, ADM-A technically. So I think that that's going to be a little bit more, it's going to tighten the process up, if you will, and be more accurate with our attendance, so. And we'll receive more funds if we have more attendance.
The challenge unfortunately is that what the state's doing is, they're trying to real, they're trying to come as close to real time as they can, so that we're getting adequacy based on the most recent collection of, of, you know, enrollment. But what Christine's saying is, I understand it, is we're going to take a number, we're going to estimate a number now. Instead of there being a guaranteed number, there's going to be a calculation that happens subsequent to when we needed the number. So when we need the number for tax rate setting, we're going to have to lowball the number. Not by millions of dollars, but still, we're going to have to estimate potentially 95% or so. To be conservative, because we don't want to have the number that actually gets published be less than what we estimated, because then we wouldn't have raised tax dollars that we needed. So we're going to raise a couple extra tax dollars and add to this fund balance conversation we're talking about. Now we're going to have a little bit of fund balance left over potentially, because we will have estimated 95% of our figure. And if it comes in at 100%, then that extra 5% will be unanticipated revenue.
And you'll be talking to us about it at this time.
And the state's done this now as a matter of course, so they took away from us a very predictable guaranteed number that we can go to tax rate setting with, and now they've given us another opportunity to estimate. And, and that leaves the door open for them not to send it. So I think we need to be mindful of it and watch, you just don't know for sure.
You just have to be err on the side of caution.
I'm glad you're still laughing, because if I had to do what you do, I mean, I, I'd be running through the hills.
This is the best part, this is what I love.
This is the challenge.
This is what I love, is the budget.
Really?
I love it.
Wow.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad you love it.
Are we ready to go to budget development schedule?
Why not, I'll, I'll do that. I presented a draft schedule to you that hopefully will get your either approval or consensus agreement tonight. Doesn't have to be voted perhaps. And, because then I want to send this on to the Budget Committee, so they know what our plan of meetings is. You can see that in the month of September, I begin working with administrators, and then we put our, our budget together and present it to you at the October 17th Board Meeting. And then there are budget work sessions, you see there are three dates of budget work sessions scheduled there, two in October, one in November. And. Yes, right, and, and, and I actually, because we have an extra Thursday in October, I added an extra meeting. I thought last year, you know, again, we heard earlier comments, we were a little compressed for time. I think the additional time will help us. The other thing is that when I met recently with the Budget Committee, I think they made a good suggestion, and that is that we try to start our examination of other warrant articles earlier. Not, not wait till we put the budget to bed and then look at them, but try and do them in tandem to some extent. So I thought if we did the extra time, that would make good sense. A 6 o'clock meeting time for our work sessions has seemed to have worked in the past. And then the goal again is to provide the budget to the Budget Committee before Thanksgiving, which is very late in November this year. And, and then after that, it's, the schedule is really set by the Budget Committee and then by law. And you see dates down here for public hearings and when we post. And, and these were first actually given to me by Steve Fornier, who kind of jumped on it pretty quickly and said, Jim, I think this is the schedule. And we tentatively agreed to it, and then I asked Christine to review it against up all that we learn about an SP-2 schedule, and, and these dates have seemed correct for us. So unless you have any new ideas or objections, then this, I think, would be our schedule for developing the budget.
I have a couple questions, does anyone else have anything? I just wanted to be cognizant of Tony's comments. So these are public meetings, or are they? They are?
They are, you know, I think, where I, I think, I may have misinterpreted her, but I think some people feel they ought to be on TV. And maybe, you know, certainly the ones when we have board meetings, they are. But the budget work sessions last year were not.
Is that something we could do?
It really changes the tenor of your conversation when you can't throw mud against the wall and talk about what if without creating.
Potential for some backlash.
A whole lot of backlash, when it was just a simple question. My suggestion and my comment about last summer, last year was, I wasn't, I came and spoke one night, and I wasn't paying a lot of attention until all of a sudden something triggered. If I, if I made the statement to the board that last year, we had a, we had a budget development process, we came to a point, and then it wasn't, we hadn't cut enough, and we had to go back. Is that fair to say? Was it a process like that? We had to go back and find some more things? Because it, I guess, trying to echo what, or trying to restate what I thought I heard Tony saying, people were watching the budget as tightly or loosely as you watch the budget and know something about the budget. And then it seemed like something we didn't expect, in terms of the depth of cuts that needed to be made or changes to be made, became a public conversation. And I guess I'm not, I'm not sure I have any suggestion other than, it felt like it was not, it was not that we were talking from, I don't know if you were, but it didn't feel like the board was talking about cutting this and cutting this and cutting this from the first meeting or two. That it was at the end of the process when you realized you had to get down, maybe not. So maybe, maybe there's something that we can do in terms of sharing the results of the ongoing deliberations. I mean, if we're meeting over the course of three or four nights, and we're driving towards the bottom line, is there something in terms of some minutes that could be taken or some summary that could be shared, so that people could have a sense of whether there's anything about which to offer comment?
Well, one thing is different this year is that electronic newsletter that I send out.
Yeah, yeah, that's, so there's something that.
With summaries in there.
We've been through regular aid and special aid, and here's a couple of things that have come up in the course of the budget deliberations thus far. Something like that might help, but I.
One thing we don't do or haven't done is, we don't have a minute taker, we don't have someone come to those minutes and take minutes. I mean, perhaps that, I mean, because I do know in other situations, you know, our general situation, town, community members do look up our minutes and look at what we've done. And so I don't know if that's another expense or if what that would entail. To pay someone to come and do that, but it very well could be worth it to make sure we're, because, you know, this is, this is an ongoing problem for us, is to make sure that we can communicate with the community. And if we're not doing a good job at that, then we need to figure out a different way or a better way to do it.
And we're being asked to do that.
Right, directly, so.
I like, I like the way Nate said it too.
Yeah.
Discussions sometimes get messy.
And I don't want to, I want to get in the way of transparency, and I'm not looking to hide anything, but boy, you, you can't, you can't say, well, what if, what if they had to pay for that, or what if we didn't do that? Well, you, you can't even ask that question without somebody, without creating a constituency now that wants to rise up and defend that, when it might have just been a.
A thought that goes away.
An idea that immediately goes away, and I don't, you know, you don't want to.
I will say again, though, they are public meetings.
Yeah, absolutely.
And people have, have always had the right to come. So that, I think, would still be offered to people like Tony. And, you know, and maybe, I haven't really had a chance to digest this list, but there must be school board meetings sprinkled throughout this process, correct?
Yeah, that's why you started hesitating a minute, I mean, we have, in, in October, it's October 3rd is early. So the 17th is the first one. November, the first meeting.
November 21st.
Is, is.
Seven.
Yeah, must be the 7th, right. Is the 7th, and then the 21st. Okay, so I don't have November 7th listed there, in other words, I hadn't planned to really deal with budget at the November 7th meeting.
Well, but, so this is what I'm thinking, I mean, I'm just, again, I'm throwing this idea out there. If there are meetings in between these work sessions, I know you already have many reports that you give us, but if we had minutes or we had a way, we could do like a quick, this is what we talked about, these are the things we're thinking, again, they're not written in stone, yada, yada, yada. I mean, I, I don't know if that's something we could effectively do to help.
Enrollment is driving an increase in this, we had to add one of these. We're thinking about increases in salary at this rate, the teacher contract's going to drive this.
Yeah, just the highlights, the highlights.
So that people can, and the highlights need to be fair and transparent.
Yeah.
We're thinking about cutting a program, okay, well then we probably ought to share.
We ought to share that, yeah.
We ought to bear fruit on that, so the people can rally up and, and say that's something that's important to us.
Doesn't have to be this long thing, but just, you know.
The highlights that people. The highlights that people should be aware of.
If you're, if you're really trying to pay attention, these are the things that you should launch onto. Um, and then I'm trying, I mean, you could also, I don't know, maybe I need to think about this a little bit more. It's getting kind of late, but I'll try and figure out a different, another way that we could maybe integrate it with the newsletter to get more information out to people. Because I do feel, I mean, I don't know if any of you have a feel about that newsletter, but I do feel that there are some people that are, I've, I've seen comments like in, in social networks where, oh, I saw in the newsletter that this is, so I, I think it's getting out to people and I think it's another good tool, so.
I get data back.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know.
Good. All right.
People are looking at it.
All right.
Definitely that. So it's worth the effort.
All right. Anyone, anything else? No? All right, this is great. Thank you. Well, I did want to say, I appreciate that you added the date for the petition warrant articles because I always feel like when we get to this place, everyone's like, what's the date for that? And so I'm glad that it's finally in this one little document, so thank you.
I'm going to clean this up. I'm going to add November seventh, um, school board meeting on to this and then I'll get rid of the word draft and then I'll send you the final version.
Thank you.
And the budget committee.
Okay.
May I, may I ask, you don't need any action on a job description, right? That was just information to let us know the kind of duties?
For tonight, I want to digest it myself first and then put it in a better format for you, but you may see it at the next meeting.
It looked, it looked good.
Yes, it did.
So policy, these are just for review or no? Or I can wait till you're done taking your notes?
Yeah, they're, um, well, they're both about animals.
Yeah.
So I, I, we already had one on the books. Uh, policy IMG is regarding animals in school. And, um, you know, I did some checking with school boards association and there was no, um, there, there was nothing there to, um, to cause any change. I didn't see anything that was, you know, outdated. And then, um, and then the second one though, uh, is mandated by law, the, uh, one regarding servicing animals, which is obviously a very different concept for, than just having animals in school. And so that's a policy that we're required to have. Um, again, the language I've provided for you here is the, is the, uh, school boards association suggested language. It provides a definition here, a pretty lengthy definition, but a definition of what a service animal is and, uh, and access to school buildings and grounds. And it's good to have in place. I've, I've, in my, in my last district, we had a student, uh, in, in middle school, at least for the three years of middle school, had a service, service dog. And it was, uh, great. It was very, you know, a real educational piece for the school because, you know, you, we would have an assembly and we'd bring somebody in from people that trained service dogs and so you'd tell people, this is not a pet, okay? This isn't about a pet. It's about somebody who's really helping somebody navigate, uh, their school day and their, and their lives. And, um, so it was just a neat, a really neat element in that school.
I work with someone in my office who does this sort of stuff.
Really?
Yeah. And it, it's really, I mean, I've only had this new job for a little while, but it, it's really quite neat to see how he does help this, this person. I mean, it's, it's remarkable.
Fascinating, right.
It is. So I'm glad that we're coming up with the times and, uh, so do you need us, we need to do it?
It's just first reading. This will go to the next, next session.
Thank you. All right, we're getting there, we're getting there. Ooh, resignations. We do have a resignation. Do you want to say anything?
Yes, um, yes, Jackie Murphy, somebody that, you know, served us extremely well as a, as, um, um, case manager and, um, has just gone to a different place and a, a different school system. And I think, you know, for her and her point in life, I think it was a good decision on her part and we certainly supported her going and, and fortunately we were, um, we had somebody waiting in the wings that was able to slide right in, so. So it worked out very well for everybody, I think.
Is that one of our nominations coming up? Yeah?
Yes, you have a nomination for Yi Fu Han.
Okay.
And he had done, I think, some, uh, long-term subbing for us in that kind of a role last year. And so we knew him very well and it's like, wow, this is, this is automatic.
Yeah, that's great.
So first things first, I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Jacqueline Murphy.
Second?
I would like to thank her for her service. Any, um, discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. And then the next nomination, well, do you know how to say his name?
Yi Fu Han.
Yi or Yi? I, I've heard both, but Yi.
Yi Fu Han.
Yi Fu Han. And he's case manager at the, uh, at the junior senior high school.
So I move to accept the motion to accept his nomination as the case manager of the junior senior, junior high school?
Junior senior high.
Junior senior high school.
Junior senior high, yeah.
Just making sure it wasn't middle school. I have Yi Fu Han.
Do I have a second?
Second.